Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January fourteenth, Regular Council Meeting of 2025, our first one. Welcome everyone. And with that, D. Styles Elliott, our City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Good. So for community announcements, first of all, we're coming up with a holiday this next Monday. So the Pullman City Hall, the City Administration Offices, Neil Public Library, Pullman Parks and Recreation, and Parks and Rec Preschool will be closed for Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, January twentieth. Regular hours will resume on Tuesday, January twenty-first, and as always, emergency services will still remain available. There is a traffic revision that's coming up this Thursday, January sixteenth, where Vista is going to be replacing a transformer on Ny Street near Rozars. Flaggers will manage traffic starting at eight AM. Work is expected to take less than four hours, but we wanted the community to know since that's a busy area. For the Civil Service Commission, we have vacancies, both a volunteer civil service commissioner and a paid civil service secretary, chief examiner, thank you. For more information on either position, email civil.service@pullman-wa.gov. For Parks and Recreation, a number of things. So you can register for winter and spring activities. At Pullman Parks Recreation is still available. View the activity guide and register at pullmanparksandrec.com. If you're looking for something to do for the whole family this winter, pick up your monthly, quarterly, or six-month pass to the Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center, and you can visit pullman-wa.gov/swim for more information. And related to the Veterans Memorial Park, you can help the American Legion Mayor Price Post fifty-two, and the Pullman Cemetery Committee raised funds to construct a dedicated space to honor all veterans. Donate or buy a brick to immortalize a special veteran in your life. Visit pullman-wa.gov/veteranspark to learn more. And from the library, we have calming coloring and donuts. I asked them, how do you color with crayons on donuts? But they said that's not what it is. So come to Neil Public Library on Friday, January seventeenth, for a relaxing afternoon coloring session and delicious donuts. All ages are welcome from noon to one, and teens only from two to three. And the last thing with the library is we have a Silly Crafts Club for Adults. Grownups are invited to come get crafty at the Silly Crafts Club for Adults at Neil Public Library on January twenty-first from four to six. Bring your own project or participate in a planned activity. It's up to you. And I saw some pretty cool bedazzlered coasters that someone had done at the last craft club. So, lot of things to be able to do here in the community. The next item is non-agenda-related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action item on the agenda. This agenda item for comments is not to exceed thirty minutes in total. Comments will be directed to the mayor or the city councils of body, and no comment should be directed to individual council members. With that, is there anyone who would like to provide a community comment? And with that, welcome Bobby, and for your new position?
Before I start, okay, it's two minutes. I thought you said thirty.
Two minutes.
Seconds. Okay.
Oh, no, thirty minutes for everyone, not.
Oh, total. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, good evening, and Bobby Ryder, I just, a couple of things that I want to update you all about. One, I think you all know that I, last week, accepted the position for the Downtown Pullman Association as their executive director, and we have a lot of things to do. I wanted to share the information. This is important about, we are now a designated Main Street City. That is important because now we qualify for collecting business and operations taxes through, and the businesses qualify for the BNO tax credit program. So this means that they can designate where their BNO taxes go to the Downtown Pullman Association, which we can then recycle back into the community, and then they receive a seventy-five percent tax credit the following year. So it's pretty exciting for them, and also for us. We also have two other campaigns going, fundraising for, again, trying to raise money to improve facades downtown and do more with promotions. The Cook's First campaign that we're partnering with them, and that's underway. And then the Pullman Civic Trust is also going to be mailing to their members, letting them know what's going on with the downtown and how they can help through donating to the Downtown Pullman Association. So those are three exciting things that are coming up. And anyway, I look forward to having more notifications and information to you throughout the year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment time. And with that, go on to City Council Member Comments, and I'll start down with Councilmember Fagerin.
No comment other than Happy New Year.
Councilmember Parks?
No comment.
Councilmember Wright?
No comment.
Councilmember Guido?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is appropriate under comments, but I have had community questions regarding the status of the DEIB committee, and I was wondering if we could get an update on that.
We have a committee that has six out of seven members on right now, so we do have one opening on the DEIB committee, and they were communicated with in December related to when the January meeting would be. So.
So it is resuming?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to mention, so I've taken a position on the Inland Northwest Red Cross and was asked to relay that there will be a blood drive on the twenty-second at WSU, and they need all the donations they can. Of course, as we know, the entire LA area, there are no drives going on, and much is needed. So, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Delera?
No comment.
Councilmember Gaither?
Good evening. I want to take a moment to invite our community to the Washington State University's upcoming Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Week happening next week from January twentieth through the twenty-fourth. This year's theme, Keep On Pushing, Building Bridges to Sustainability, reflects our shared commitment to fostering unity, connection, and sustainability in our community. The week is filled with impactful events open to the public, including on January twentieth, virtual panel discussion, community activities such as the Writers Give Voice Poetry Reading and Open Mic held at the Snipes Museum of Fine Art, a drum circle in the Terrell Atrium, and then on January twenty-third at five-thirty PM in the Cubs Senior Ballroom, we will honor outstanding students, faculty, staff, and community members with the MLK Legacy Awards, followed by a keynote address by Rhonda V. McGee, who's a leading voice in mindfulness and peace building. So I encourage everyone in the community to attend these powerful events and join us in celebrating Dr. King's legacy of cultivating a beloved community. For more details, please visit mlk.wsu.edu.
Great, thank you, everyone. And the next item is City Council, future regularly agenda requests. Are there any council members that have a future agenda request? That, Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do have two. So I'll start. The first is, and if there's anyone that will second, I request a future topic where we can explain the proper way to communicate with the city, and any changes that have occurred in the way we communicate with, of course, changeover in department heads and administration. I know some citizens remain a little confused as to how they can properly communicate effectively and in a communication seems to have slowed down a little bit, and it's difficult and frustrating for many citizens to get answers in a timely manner. So that's the first. Should I wait?
Is there someone who would second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll work on a communication agenda item?
And then the second is, I've had some concerns and some questions, given the budget and resources that we have, that possibly we need to look at some of the newer committees or work groups that we've started over the last year, and if perhaps some should take a bit of a step back or pause until those resources, we find more appropriate time and more appropriate resources. I know it's placed some stress on staff, on time, and, you know, frankly, I think on some of us as well, so.
Now, we do have a City Council goal that's being worked on, that will soon be brought to the council related to a review of all of our committees. Would you want that just piece rolled into as a part of that, or are you wanting a totally separate type thing?
I think.
Because within that one is actually recommendations related to, are there certain committees or commissions that should be sunset, or combined, or things like this?
Yeah, it seems like the work groups kind of came out on their own, whereas city committees are kind of a different.
Okay, so a specific agenda item where we'll be walking through work groups and addressing work groups as it relates to just the financial side of what the cost of a work group is?
No, more along the lines of a discussion between all of the council about if this is something that we need to take some pause on for certain work groups.
Okay.
Based on resources and time.
Okay, is there a second related to that?
Second.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and work on a upcoming. Is there any other agenda item Okay, the next item up is community comments on final action items in the agenda. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on any agenda item that the city council will take final action at the meeting, excluding items where public comment was previously accepted. This exclusion extends to prior public hearings. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda items, and regular agenda items. This item for the councils not to exceed thirty minutes in total. Comments will be directed to the mayor or the city councils of body. No comment should be directed to an individual council member. Is anyone who would like to provide a comment on final action items? Seeing none. Next, we go on to confirmation appointments, and we have a motion to confirm the reappointment of Carol Chipman to the Cemetery Committee with the term expiring December thirtieth, 2027. Could I have a motion related to that?
So moved. Second.
And with that, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Next, on to consent agenda. The items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the City Council without separate discussion. So entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
So moved. Second.
That, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, if you could please read the consent agenda?
The first item is a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of December seventeen, 2024, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number two zero one one, two nine zero four zero through two zero one one, two nine one one one, totaling three hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Item three, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number two zero one one, two nine one one two through two zero one one, two nine one seven six, totaling three hundred seventy-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number two zero one one, two nine one seven seven through two zero one one, two nine four eight, I'm sorry, two nine two four eight, totaling one million, eight hundred ninety thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-three cents. Item five, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number two zero one one, two nine two four nine through two zero one one, two nine two nine zero, totaling ninety-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Item six, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and ADP payroll transfers totaling one million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Item seven, a motion to approve dispersments for ADP payroll transfers totaling one hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Item eight, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and ADP payroll transfers totaling one million, seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Item nine, a motion to authorize a lodging tax grant to American Legion Post fifty-two in the amount of one thousand nine hundred three dollars and thirty-six cents for Hometown Heroes Banner Program. Item ten is a motion authorizing a three-year interlocal agreement for providing emergency medical services to the City of Palouse and Whitman County Fire District Number Four. Item eleven, a motion to renew the contract with O'Sullivan Legal, P L L C, to provide legal assistance and advice to the City of Pullman. And finally, item twelve, resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of a grant agreement with the Washington Military Department Emergency Management Division State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program for Cybersecurity Instant Response Plan Project and other matters related thereto.
Do any council members desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Next, on to regular agenda. Our first item is nomination and election of the mayor pro tem and the alternate mayor pro tem. And with that, council, in your packet, you see who's previously had it, been in those positions over the last few years. And I'll leave it to, open it up for discussion from the council, and then a motion. Councilmember Weller?
I guess I can just, I'll just open it up and, oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Eric Fagerin, I would suggest move up to mayor pro tem. That's how we used to do it, and then alternate mayor pro tem. Just a suggestion, I would say Carla Delira, but it's a full City Council discussion, so.
Other discussion, thoughts?
I support that.
Councilmember Gaither?
I support that, absolutely.
Okay, with that, I would, would you make a motion then?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, move to have Eric Fagerin as mayor pro tem and alternate mayor pro tem as Carla Delira.
Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, great. Next, that's our only agenda item. There's regular, on to discussion items, and this is board and commission appointments. You see before you the board and appointments within the list. Some things to note related to this, just for clarification. The airport board is a mayoral appointment, as is the Joint Planning Area Committee. And then, one correction from last year, with the Board of Volunteer Fire Pensions and Relief, that one, we appointed two council members in the RCW. How it's set up, it actually should be the mayor and one council member that is appointed that way. So with that, I'd really just entertain, is there any discussion that people have related to what they've currently done, or what they're interested in doing? Councilmember Wright?
I just have a request, and that is if, in the future, we could see timeframes on here for terms and where people are in that range, because I don't know if anybody else is like me, but I forget.
Would it be helpful for me to walk through timeframes?
Like when we came on?
Yeah.
What our terms are, you know, what the length of the term, and where we are in that term.
Okay. So if we look at the, and I'm just going to go alphabetical through the city council ones, the Audit and Finance Committee, Councilmember Delera and Fagerin are in their first year doing that. For the Capital Improvement Program Committee, Councilmember Wright, you're in your second year, and Councilmember Fagerin is in his first year. For the Downtown Pullman Association, Councilmember Parks is in her first year. For the Law Enforcement Officer and Firefighter Disability Board, Councilmember Gaither is in his first year, and Councilmember Parks is in her first year. For the Library Board, Councilmember Parks is in her fifth year. For the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Guido is in her first year, and Councilmember Wright is in her, at least her sixth year. I can only get back through 2018. For the Palouse Basin.
I get to go on?
For the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, Councilmember Weller is in his first year, but he has actually previously served two other years earlier. For the Palouse Regional Transportation Planning Commission, Councilmember Delera is in her first year. For the Southeast Washington Economic Development Association, Councilmember Delera is in her first year. For the Volunteer Fire, for the Board of Volunteer Firefighters Pension Relief Board, Councilmember Gaither is in his first year, and Councilmember Parks is in her first year, but she has previously served two years earlier. And then for the Whitman County Solid Waste Advisory Commission, Councilmember Weller is in his first year. Does that answer the questions that you had?
Um, kind of.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Yes.
I've never served on Palouse Basin Aquifer before. This is the first year.
That's right. Eileen was on first.
Eileen was on first, for two years. Yeah. Well, more than two years.
So I have you on there from 2019 to 2020?
No, no. It was, no, it was only, it was.
Okay, I'll go back.
It was just Eileen.
Yeah.
So I was just, when I went back through the past city council meetings, so with that, Councilmember Delera?
Yeah.
So I'm standing corrected on that.
I guess another clarification, I'm currently am not appointed for SWIDA. I'm in the Audit Committee. So I'm in my first year for the Audit Committee, so I think that's an error.
Who is in the Audit Committee with Councilmember Delera, with Councilmember Fagerin?
I am, but previously you mentioned that Councilmember Delera was in SWIDA, but that's Councilmember Gaither.
Councilmember Wright?
At least for the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, when we updated the ordinance or changed the ordinance or cleaned up the ordinance, I think the clock started again on terms, and we had some staggered terms to get everybody kind of in sync. And then we had a correction to that.
We had a correction to that, that there would only going forward be two consecutive terms of three years each, once everybody got to, you know, the same level. And so that's my question. When did the clock restart on that? Do we know?
And I would, that's something I can take a look at. I wasn't prepared for that question tonight.
That's okay. I didn't think of it until just now, otherwise I would have asked you. So yeah, that's my question.
So, so related, are there any, are there, if, for council members that are currently on a board or commission, are there any that you would be interested in coming off of, to possibly take something else?
Mayor, I got a piece of information I think I'd like to pass on to the City Council as well as part of their consideration, and that's the CIP Committee appointments that the calendar has been set like we usually do, because we have to get started early. And this year's CIP Committee is meeting on the seventh of May in the afternoon. So if you guys are thinking about that, I wanted to.
You need to be able to make that meeting.
Yeah.
Councilmember Parks, did you, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say I can definitely step off the committee that you only needed one council member on. The Volunteer Firefighter.
Volunteer Firefighter, okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
The lodging tax was changed in city code in two. The lodging tax was changed in city code in 2022.
2022.
Thank you. Thank you, Dee.
So you're in your second of your third year, of your three-year term?
This would be my first term.
This would be your third year?
My first term.
Of your, of your first term, correct. Am I seeing, a lot of people are happy where they're at and don't want to change?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gaither?
Go ahead. Sorry, given the status of SWIDA, I would like to step down from SWIDA.
Okay. Is there someone who's interested in SWIDA?
But, okay.
I'm sorry.
Is there a status?
Yeah, as far as I was, I mean, the entire time I served, there was, to my knowledge, no meeting for SWIDA.
The last time I met with them, they were meeting and were expecting you there, so...
There seemed to be confusion on the SWIDA. I would like to continue if they're meeting, but if they're not meeting, then I'll step down.
Okay, so we can do a follow-up related to SWIDA? Councilmember Delira, did you, oh, no, I'm sorry, it's Councilmember Weller.
Mr. Mayor, I just want one more edit. The Palouse Basin Aquifer does not meet at City Hall. It's only at U of I Facilities Operations Building.
Okay. It doesn't alternate, it just stays at one spot? So I'm hearing that you're happy with all of your, all of your appointments? Dee, any questions? Okay, so we would just take Councilmember Parks off of the volunteer fire relief, because that's an extra one, and everybody else stays the same? Okay, the second discussion then is, if you remember during the budget, during the budget process, I talked about the increased staff costs as it related to city council meeting at this time during, during the day, and outside the normal workday, along with just additional stress that was putting on staff with, with the time. And so, I talked about, I'd like to have a discussion about, can we move the city council earlier in the day? Now, from a budget perspective, during the workday would be the best, but I know from conversations that, that happened at that meeting, there's definitely concerns about community access and current city council member work schedules. So out of that, what, I have a few things that, as a part of this discussion, that I'd like to talk through. The first one is I'd like to propose a three-month trial where we do a start time that's like a 5:30 start time. So it's, so for those that need to work till 5 o'clock, it gives you time still to get here. It's not a late 7 o'clock where the staff that have to travel and travel back for them. And so, interested, just Councilmember Fagerin?
I would just say I'd be very supportive of a three-month trial at 5:30. Just like you said, I feel like it's reasonable, gives people time to get off work, come to council, watch council. If they have time, then get home before it's too late.
You can ride your bike real fast. Other? Okay, so I'll work with staff to put together, I'm going to let Mike, Mike?
Sure, just for some clarification, I'd want to bring a resolution in front of city council to do that, because right now we're working under R-1213, and it has the start time on there. So the next meeting on the 28th should meet at 7 o'clock, so when I hear three month, am I hearing February, March, and April?
Okay.
For that. And how would council feel about me just putting that on the consent agenda? Okay, very well. I will have that for you at the next meeting.
Councilmember Parks?
I just had a quick question. I'm sure it is, but staff has been, are they supportive of this?
Staff are supportive of this, yes.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, we've had conversations around that. Councilmember Fagerin? Okay, so other things, just as, within this, with the meeting times, it used to be that when we published the city council meetings, it was actually on a Friday rather than a Thursday, and I know we've moved that publishing up. And sometimes we get into the state where if a meeting's on Tuesday, what the work that it needs to do to get it out on Thursday. So my question is, how valuable is that Thursday for you in prep, or if we relaxed and went back toward like a Friday morning publish, is that okay, or, and this is, I'm just having this discussion and conversation, nothing, so with that, Councilmember Parks?
I would be fine with that, and whatever is best for the staff in their preparations.
Councilmember Delira, I think you had thoughts?
Yeah, I personally do value that extra business day to be able to ask questions from staff before the meeting, but I'm open to seeing how this goes, and, yeah, I'm open to seeing how the Friday morning release date goes.
You know, and I'd say, you know, if this is something you're open to, we can work on it to, and then honestly, just see if we can work out bugs, but I know there's always this stress point of, from Tuesday night to get the next agenda out when we have back-to-back meetings. Councilmember Guido?
Am I hearing that that would also be a three-month trial period, or?
If you'd like, we could do that.
I mean, that's a thought, because like councilperson Delira, I do, sometimes it's nice to have the Friday to digest and ask questions.
Well, and that's where they would, we'd work to, like by noon, have it out on Friday, but that doesn't give you the full Friday, obviously. The, the other thing, just in conversations with staff that I'd say for council is, if I'm trying to work with staff time and which staff are here in the meetings, I, you know, the staff that are on the regular agenda, they're here. Oftentimes, staff come if they're, if they have an item that is on the consent, but what I would ask is, could you let Mike know by Monday evening whether you would like to pull a consent item? Because if, because if you're not going to pull it, we'd like to be able to let the staff go home and not just sit through a council meeting if we're not going to pull and ask questions of their item. I know we're a lot of fun. They, you know, they have the fear of missing out, but, so is that, so, and, and, so that just helps for the staff, so that if, if we haven't communicated to Mike by Monday that we'd like to pull the item, then we can communicate to staff on Tuesday that they don't need to stay then. Okay. The last item I have on this is scheduling and planning for our spring town hall meeting, where we tend to have that community gathering, being able to get community information. What I'm looking toward is, we don't have a council meeting that's scheduled on the third week of March, so that's March 18th, that's the Tuesday after spring break, for those that are, have, have spring break in mind. And so, is that something that looks like it would work with schedules this far out for that March 18th, for us to start planning and getting communication out to community about that's an opportunity for a community town hall and do, kind of similar to what we did down in the senior center, so it's a little more informal opportunity to gather and meet?
Be out of town, sort of.
So it doesn't work for Pat, okay. So what I'll do is I'll work with staff to get, to get some other, other possible dates then, if Pat's going to be out of town then. So I want to make sure everyone can be there. So I'll have Mike work with you on schedules for when we can get that one scheduled, because I know that's one thing that's important for us, is that community, the component of being able to be connected to the community and community have opportunity to be reaching out and connecting to us. So that communication piece. So those are the items that I have related to this, that, with the council meeting pieces. Is there anything else with this discussion that sparked questions or thoughts?
If you would like, I could send out a doodle poll with some extra dates and see who's available where.
I'll let, I'll let, thank you, Dee. Mike doesn't have to do it.
Mike's not allowed to send out doodle polls, because I keep putting the wrong time zone, but I'm looking at the different dates that are available. Should we be looking at exclusively Tuesdays, or should we give a smattering of other alternatives? Because I'm looking at some dates in March, and, you know, the 11th is a tentative council right now. So I don't want to, you know, come back with like a day or two, and then it doesn't work for some people, so I want to be able to give a broad. So should I just basically focus on Tuesday nights, or is there some other options that council would like us to put out in the doodle poll?
I would say, how about if we start with Tuesday nights, and then if that doesn't work, then we could look at other times? It's more complicated with people's schedules. Okay, with that, we don't have any other, any new business to come before us, and so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.